Thank you. Good evening and welcome to Planning Board Meeting of December 18th. This is the, our last meeting of 2018. These meetings are recorded and on Milford Public Television. With that, I'll open the meeting and take a motion for signing the meeting minutes for my last meeting by Pat Second. Seconded by Lena, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the meeting minutes will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. For anybody that is here for the Walden Woods Condominium hearing, just so you're aware, we have received a letter from the applicant that they will be asking for a grant of extension due to the fact that there's only four members here tonight. And so that, we, there will be, I would assume that we will be approving that grant of extension. So if anybody is here for that, just to let you know. And I believe that, yeah, they have asked for the, to be rescheduled to the, our first meeting in January.
Motion.
That will actually, we'll do that as part of the public hearing, but I just want, in case anybody was here, I didn't want them sitting here for no reason.
I know, it's the 702, that's why I was.
Yeah.
It's 702.
It's 702.
Well, I'd have to have opened it, so we'll, we'll go on our regular order, how's that? And we'll get rid of the 81Ps, then I'll come back to it. 30 Birch Street, 81P for Rifleman Properties LLC, is that one here?
No.
Not here? 19 Beach Street Extension, John Lucas.
Mr. Chairman, what are your plans?
I have the Form A application, $250 check. Go ahead, Bob.
I can't see what you're trying to do, buddy. I said, "I can't see what you're trying to do."
He was standing over there, waiting for them to hang.
This is a parcel of land that has run to the ZBA. Granted a variance by the Milford zoning board on November 16th to 2018. At one point, this were, these were two separate lots, one fronting on Archer, one fronting on Beach, someplace, at some point, though, this line went away. The applicant applied to have that line put back in. Went to the ZBA, got approval for two separate lots. The only, they meet the frontage, they meet the width, they don't meet the area. The area in the zone is 15,000 square feet. They both have 10,000 square feet. One condition of the ZBA approval was that this portion of the building, of this building here, was to be removed, the portion that was over the property line, so there would be no property line encroachments. Pretty much it.
Can we remove this building?
So effectively, they went with a zero lot setback. For this building, this existing building, yes. Just bizarre.
This is non-conforming, that's non-conforming.
Motion. Motion by Pat to have Larry sign the 81P, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Because we have no choice, unanimous at four. Thank you.
Making of.
You say you had another.
Two non-conforming lots.
Yeah.
Against all zoning regulations and everything else.
Why is there zoning? We go with zero lot setbacks.
I know.
We're not gonna take the building down, we'll just go with zero lot setbacks.
I don't mind if somebody's zoning.
This is for 81P for the lot that's adjacent to 194 Congress Street.
I don't mind. This guy bought it, make him 100,000 bucks.
This is another one, zoning board granted a variance, I believe.
He bought a house, no.
I don't know, I can't. Pirelli, William Pirelli is the applicant. Pass these out.
Nobody told me.
Check for 250.
I didn't understand this one. Yeah, I didn't understand this one at all. I'm sorry.
It's land, so.
Yeah, that's not right, though. That's, not on that corner. Not based on what's behind you. It's an inherent danger, especially on that intersection. Should've left it as a single lot. Go ahead.
Okay. So, as you mentioned, this, there was a variance granted on this on October 16th by the zoning board. Previously, there was two lots, one was 15,000 and one was a 9,000-foot triangular lot. This change in the plan and the new lot line makes it so that the lots are more evenly divided. One is 11,512 square feet and one is 10,527 square feet.
Eli, evenly divided would've been 11-11, no?
No.
He said more.
Huh?
Well, these were merged lots to begin with.
Yeah, they weren't actually two separate lots. We know that. That's sort of a stretch. Motion. Motion by Pat to have Larry sign the 81P, do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
You don't have much of a choice.
Seconded by Babe, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. Thank you.
Make a motion to do away with the zoning.
I just make a motion to do away with zoning, why bother? You don't have to.
We don't need it, right? The ZBA gives it away, though.
So, we'll have, we'll go to the two public hearings. We have the two continued public hearings, as I had mentioned. 702 public hearing is the application of Walden Woods Condominium Association for a change in the special permit for the planned residential community development. With that, I'll read in a letter from Attorney Fernandez. Please consider this letter and attached grant of extension form as a request and consent to a continuance of the above-scheduled hearing from December 18th to the next scheduled Planning Board meeting on January 15th, 2019. The continuation is necessitated, I understand, by the fact that there will only be four members of the Planning Board present on December 18th. Please also consider this letter as an authorization to extend any deadline for action by your board may be needed to accommodate the continuance. Motion. Motion by Pat to grant the extension to January 15th, 2019, second?
Second.
Seconded by Lena, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. So it'll be, it'll be on at 7:02, will be the scheduled time for the continuation of the Walden Woods. And seeing it's past 7:05, we'll do the continued public hearing for the application of Ernest Capitos and Lyndon Nero for 40 North Vine Street for approval of a single lot definitive plan on property located off Silver Hill and Congress Street, as shown on Assessors Map 22, Block 64, Lot 2, in the RB zone. Attorney Antonellis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Joseph Antonellis, on behalf of the applicants. Mr. Chairman, I believe we are returned here tonight for a review of this one-lot subdivision. You had asked that Town Council offer an opinion relative to the pre-existing non-conforming aspects of the lot that is created or is finally defined by this subdivision. To the best of my knowledge, the Town Council has forwarded an opinion to the board. And again, it's my understanding that Town Council agrees with my earlier statements that this is a lot protected by the strict provisions of chapter, Master General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, which is commonly known as the grandfathering statute. This is because of the existence of Silver Hill Road as a public way in two particular locations, and obviously Congress Street. The lot has been separate and independent from other land owned by the applicants and was so before the adoption of the zoning, and therefore falls within the purview of 48, Section 6, which allows that lot to be built on, provided that it had a minimum of 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage. I think you know it has significantly more than 50 feet of frontage and the area of the lot is above the 5,000 square feet.
Has the plan also been corrected for the curve radius at the corner of Silver Hill and Congress Street?
I know that it was agreed to. Mr. Boxon?
I believe, though, the plan has been corrected, yes.
Not easy enough to tell, if you can tell me if that radius is 20 feet or not.
Talking about this one right here?
Yep.
Actually, okay, no, the radius is, wait a minute.
Outside, that one right there.
The radius is being shown at 12.59 feet, so.
That's not correct.
That is correct, it's incorrect.
Yes.
So we agree, we had agreed at the last hearing that it would be corrected. I've been switched off on engineers here. But to the extent that the board could review that post-closing of the thing, that again, that was agreed to. We recognize that that was a, that needs to be, regulation needs to be complied with.
Yep. So I do, in our packets, just to go through, we do have a letter from Town Council. And as Attorney Antonellis indicated, Mr. Bodys has the opinion that this, this lot was created prior to at least the zoning change that defined minimum lot requirements in the town in that area. It was, it was probably created after the fact that this was a residential zone, but probably bef, probably was created, I should say, before we changed the, and called this the RB zone, so it was. And as best as I tried to take a look through, I can't, I couldn't tell, unfortunately, Registry of Deeds hasn't gone electronic enough to, to be able to follow through on, on finding the deeds of purchase, but as best I could tell, this probably happened in the early 60s and the zoning, zoning change, I believe, I had had a discussion with Larry, I believe, was in 1967, that we created the zoning district. So it does appear that, based on what's written in here, that it has, it is a lot.
Mr. Caligione, I could offer, we, we did some research collectively, and we actually found an old plan that showed Silver Hill Road in existence from Purchase Street all the way to the Mill River.
Going straight, Joe, or going around, around the corner?
Right, right, no, straight out, right where it is now. And, and what is now White Wood was a continuation of Silver Hill in the original layout.
Yeah, I couldn't find anything like that. I tried to, I tried to look at the original, unfortunately, the original deed, I believe, Capitos may have purchased that lot, that property in the 40s.
Way back.
And I couldn't find that deed of the transfer, because I wanted to see what, what that original deed looked like, but I wasn't able to do that.
It's a, it's a huge meets and bounds description.
Right. Yep. And not being able to do that. We do have the letter. I don't know, if there are any questions from the board?
Only question I had is the discussion that took place, and it makes no difference, is that an RB or RC zone?
I did check with Larry on that, babe, just, just asking. Since we've shown zoning, the line has always gone up straight.
It's gone up straight.
It's gone up straight through that section, so that would put this in the RB zone, not in the RC zone.
Yeah, it's always been. Yeah, that was just, again, the frontage is the same, it ma, it makes no difference as far as the, the lot itself, but.
Yeah, I did, I did try to check back, just to see how we had always defined that, and shown that in terms of town meeting, and it's always been a straight line going straight up existing Silver Hill. Any other questions from the board? Is this a public hearing? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion been made to close the public hearing, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. All those in favor of closing the public hearing will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four.
I also make the motion to grant, subject to the revision to the, to the plan as, as was agreed upon.
Sign the plan.
To, yeah, sign the definitive plan.
Yep. Motion been made, subject to having the change of the radius at the Silver Hill, Congress Street Extension, it's changed to 20-foot radius to sign the plan, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Babe.
The only other thing to that, Joe, is that I would strongly recommend that the applicant seriously, seriously give credence to positioning the house so that it fronts Congress Street. I think based on the traffic and the layout of the way cars come up Silver Hill, I, I think that in theory, and again, not, not that this is gonna matter, because they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but I think in theory, the, the house would probably situate better if the backyard was facing down Silver Hill. I just, I get concerned, coming through that intersection, which I do nightly, the upside to it is, obviously, they're gonna clear away all that brush, which hopefully will give better visibility to the cars coming up Silver Hill, but still, I, I would show concern if that was their backyard and kids playing in the backyard with, with, with the, with the accidents that I've seen, that I've, since I've been there for the last 20 years, give or take.
No.
That's just my two cents.
Antonellis can bring it, yeah, Mr. Antonellis.
That's just my two cents, I'll.
I'm not sure that, you know.
I have nothing to do with it, I have nothing to do with it, I'm just, I feel that.
And I get the feeling, I get the feeling we're probably gonna see this again in another form at some point, per se.
Don't believe so.
You're not coming back for a variance?
Don't have to.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna say definitively, but right now, it's my understanding, you probably will not see us again.
I.
Okay.
I would rather see it come back as a variance, to give the people something to build, something that fits into the, to the area better than.
The case law that defines, that is, follows that statute, says that it's, it's free and clear of all sideline setbacks, totally. And there is even a case that says, well, does that mean you could build it within a one foot of the property line? And the court says yes.
Oh, okay.
And, and it says, no one would wanna do that, but the legislature never feel, never brought that into it. So we don't, I don't believe we'll be back, but I don't mean to tell you that I'm not listening to your suggestion. My clients are obviously gonna wanna build a house that provides their residents with the safest, and I will certainly share the opinion of this board, that you believe an entrance from Congress Street to the property is the best way to go. Just my opinion.
And I'm not, and, and I would hope that the Building Department also asked Mr., asked the Town Council for opinion on that, because I'm not, in my, I did try to go through it, and I wasn't convinced that that was, that that was totally case law, but I'm not gonna get into.
And I gotta be honest with you, Mr. Caligione, neither was I until a few weeks ago. And I, I can tell you that I've always come back for variances, but I did, did some more research and was very surprised by what I found.
Yeah, I, I looked and, based on stuff that I had seen published through the state, I didn't see that as being, I mean, the, I found reference to the, the minimum lot size and the frontage, I did not find any reference to the fact that you can't hold them to, to side yard and front yard setbacks, but that's a start to somebody else.
I assume it to be a split. I agree. I assume it to be a split.
That would, again, if there's no, if, if there's no restrictions, and they can build something that fits in with the neighborhood.
I'd be, I'd be very hesitant on that, to be totally honest, but unfortunately, we have nothing to say.
I, again.
Because, because that, that effectively allows them to, on a, on a location like this, to put a house right next to the property line, which is very difficult.
And again, I, that's exactly what that case said, and it was very surprising to me, and you know, I've been at it a while, and I've come in with a lot of variances on these kinds of lots for that, so.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, again, as I said, I, I hope that the Building Department, when they find that, follows through.
And then the driveway, the same thing, as if they come off the old, that spur of Silver Hill Road and not onto Silver or Congress Street, I think that would.
I think that's gonna be very difficult to do, and I'm not sure that that, that really, because then you put two of them, you're gonna put two driveways pretty close.
What?
You're gonna put two driveways very close, because that's where those two houses, the existing houses that are behind, come off. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that, that really helps us, but.
It seems.
Nothing's gonna help us, it doesn't matter.
It really doesn't matter, so.
It just seems it would be safer than coming out to Congress or to Silver Hill. Again, that's, my, my worry now is for the neighbors, and what they, what they've bought and.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, we, we, it probably isn't worthwhile, I mean, we would have a difficult time, because there is no road there. So if we have the driveway come out to the location that there's no road, who plows that? Who takes care of it? Who does what?
You can't do that anyhow, because there's a guardrail there.
So, I mean, I don't think you'd wanna be doing that. Well, no, I'm talking, I think the downside, on the far side, you could. I think he was talking about taking it out on Silver Hill, but.
You'd have to clear, you'd have to clear away a lot of brush and debris. Doesn't matter.
Not on the Silver Hill side, the downside.
Yeah. So anyways, we have a.
Not come out on the Congress side, come out on the downside, the downside in Silver Hill, whatever. I just, that's my two cents.
I, again, we have a motion, motion and a second, to approve the definitive plan. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four.
Thank you for your time.
Babe. Next thing we have is conditional approval contract lot releases, modification of South Central Estates 2.
What we've discovered, well, we didn't, our attorneys had, that the modification of the South Central Estates 2, which changed Gordon Circle to Gordon Drive and extended it to the town line, we'd approved lot releases, language of which referred to the wrong thing, basically. So what we've tried to do now is do it over again, and G and H put together a conditional approval contract, or an amendment to a conditional approval contract, that should've been done in the first place, to the original subdivision, which was South Central Estates 2. And that language is what you see on the amendment, that's the second part of, of number three. So the Form E1 has all the proper references and refers to this new amended conditional approval contract. The Form E1, you know, is, makes it clear that these lots being released are in the modification of South Central Estates 2 on Gordon Drive, and that's the subdivision that, that you approved and they recorded. But the main problem had been the amended conditional approval contract in the first place, because there never was one for the modification of South Central 2. So the bond that we have for, what is it, 744,000, whatever, doesn't tie to anything. So, well with this, so we're asking that you approve this amendment and redo the Form E1, which will now be accurate, with the proper documentation to tie everything together. Because previously, you, there was no record of where South Central, the modification of South Central 2 came from, other than the plan, because none of the rest of the documentation noted it at all. This finalizes it, in a sense, on both ends, it makes it clear that it's still part of the original South Central Estates 2 subdivision, and that that's why it's an amendment to that conditional approval contract. But it refers to the new plan, and the new Form E will pull it all together.
So effectively, this came out of the fact that the original one, when, when we approved the amended plan, we never did a conditional approval for that, it just, it was, it was living off of the old one, whereas this now takes and does a conditional approval for, for the new, for the amended section.
Yes. And the Form E1 that was, was approved and signed, is now going to reference all the proper stuff, because previously, it, it referenced the original South Central 2, but had, that had never been amended, so.
Any questions from the board?
Good job, Bob.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to sign the certificate, the Form E1 and the amended approval contract, so I hear a second.
Second.
Seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of signing the Form E1 and the amended approval contract will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four.
Did you sign this, Larry, or we don't have the original?
We don't have the original conditional approval contract. I know it was signed, notarized by the applicant, but I believe it's still out of the office, right?
It would look good on TV.
Do you have a clean sheet, though? This one has number three on it.
No, I went, hold on.
Oh, okay, I see what you're doing.
Nope. I don't have it.
If it's not, at the next meeting.
Yep. It's all right, we don't have the conditional approval contract anyway.
I didn't, I'm on charge of the paper, my friend.
We'll just have to do it, do it next month.
I'm on charge of the paper, my friend.
Well, that's, they're the ones that screwed it up for the first one. Okay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Be quick, my friend, be quick.
I was supposed to park it.
Motion adjourned.
Yeah. Actually, in.
Do I have to sign the approval contract, Larry?
We did before, so.
Huh? Do I have to sign the approval contract?
No, yeah, once he brings the original back that they've signed.
amended site plan, 196 East Main Street, Quarry Square Realty Trust.
Dale McKinnon from Gary Aaron Hammond. Oh, I got two here. What I have is showing what was approved the last time, and then in red, what is proposed as the changes for the. The one underneath is what was approved, and the red is what's proposed. So, pretty simply, there were.
Oh, yeah.
492 spaces that were allowed.
Taking up more parking lots.
Amazon Parking Terminal, and was proposing to construct the area that was the, this location over here, that was partially built, and we're gonna build the whole thing now to add another 136 spaces to the site. I provided drainage calculations to demonstrate that the existing drainage system was previously designed back in 87, and it accounted for this watershed going over to the basins over in here, and the pipe sizes were already installed. So, before I get, go any further, this was an area that was in part of the original approval that we're taking out, because they wanna use this for some other use, I believe it's for the snow storage up in this area. So what we've proposed is there's 12 spaces down in this area here, and then they wanted to add two more onto the other two lengths, so there's 16 new spaces here, and, and then the 136 new in this area. One of the changes that we are making is because of all this stormwater is flowing towards the curving that's gonna go on the west side of this new parking lot, we're gonna have flow coming down to, instead of a catch basin, a gutter inlet, because it's got more flow than would be intercepted by a standard catch basin grate. And then we're proposing to increase this one pipe size over to, it's an existing 12, and we're gonna make it a 15-inch. So that's the proposed change, and I'd like to discuss it with you. We're adding these 137 new spaces to the Amazon for the parking terminal. There was originally a total of 484, we're now proposing 621, and the total parking spaces for the site was 941, and that will now be 1152 for the site.
I'll read Larry's letter in. Applicant requests amended site plan approval for further change to use of subject property, specifically, the applicant proposes an additional expansion transportation terminal of 484 current off-street parking spaces by adding 137 spaces in the upper parking area. This is to accommodate the expanded delivery van parking associated with the Amazon facility on Industrial Road. Site plan indicates the proposed paving of the upper parking area.
Site plan indicates the proposed paving of the upper parking area that has been used as an equipment storage area. The northeasterly parking area is laid out in a one-way striping pattern with a separate driveway for safety purposes. Both of the northern parking areas, both of the northern parking areas should share a combined driveway onto Quarry Drive. Larry recommends approval subject to that condition. We also have a letter from Town Engineer. This middle for the amended site plan. Amended site plan revised through November 12, 2018 is for the expansion of the transportation terminal. The 137 proposed spaces located in the northeast portion of the site with access off a busy drive lane associated with what is known as Quarry Drive is suggested again. Access should either be access from the existing access drive curb cut used for the lower parking area, or a modified entrance curb cut be evaluated to access both parking areas. The pavement associated with the 15 spaces in the northernmost portion of the site is in poor condition and should be removed and converted to some sort of, some type of vegetated cover. Under this current proposal, the previously approved 15 spaces are being removed from the overall spaces dedicated to the transportation terminal use. Following further discussion with the planning board, I recommend approval of amended site plan. We also have a letter from Fire Department. They have no changes requested. Highway Department, they find it to be satisfactory. And Water Company has nothing, because we're not going that deep. Counsel on disability. This really doesn't apply, because it's, there is no need for handicap spaces for this particular use. So I don't believe we have to worry about that, and that's all the letters we have. Questions from the board?
I just have a comment that, like, I've said this before, I've been, I go by that area every, almost, three or four days a week. It seems to me that the drivers are parking anywhere they want to park. I see them all over the place. Now, I understood that over by the Weight Watchers, they were not allowed to park in that area. Is that correct?
Yeah, so they have all these, you know, what's shown in these rectangular areas are only what's allowed by them to use.
Somebody needs to tell them that they are, they're parking wherever they want to park, you know? It just seems to me, every time I go there, the driver's automobiles are everywhere on the other side where the Mandarin is, taking up all that parking space. I understand that the parking space that's over by the bank, that area, that's a designated area, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, how do we get to have these drivers park where they're supposed to park?
Well, I think certainly our client doesn't want to harm any of the existing clients over in this area for this...
It's a very busy area.
And so that's something that I will bring back to the client. But obviously, Amazon has to enforce their own people to follow the guidelines of this.
Yeah, well...
It's not Amazon people. They're subcontractors.
They're contractors.
So...
Is there a way that they cordon that off? Last time you were here, they had cordoned it off with some tape in certain areas where they...
That lasted about three days.
What, Pat?
That lasted about three days. And then they got approval from this board, and the tape went out. That's the reality of what happened.
It would be a...
But what you don't also understand is it's gridlocking the entire area from them leaving there to go to Industrial Drive. It's nothing but laden with traffic. Industrial Drive in the morning is barely passable, because they are jammed from Burke Street going all the way up to Industrial Drive.
Right.
That's what's happening. So it's a free-for-all circus.
Well...
But you know my opinion on this matter.
Well, I know.
Well, I mean, I guess as a board, we can ask at this point. I mean, it's a use, but we have not seen a traffic report on this. And the traffic report, based on a multiple events and multiple people coming at one time versus the magnitude of this flow at one, it pretty much, a short window has never been addressed. So we don't have to approve this. I mean, yes, it's an approved use, but we don't have enough, I mean, clearly, if we have a problem with the traffic, we don't have enough information to be able to go forward with it. And if we think that, as of right now, it's already bad, and we're going to be approving more, then I think we certainly have the right to ask the applicant to provide us with a traffic study that addresses the current use, not the former use, as a shopping center.
I agree with that, Joe.
Is that, I mean, I think what you're asking for is a reasonable item, but can we start the construction for this? So that...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
Make the traffic, I see what you're saying, yeah, right.
Hey, you want, if you want to, if you want to tell your client you can do that, that's fine, but I'm not guaranteeing you I'm agreeing it, so approving it.
Yes, correct.
I mean, I can't tell you what that's going to show. I mean, it may in fact show exactly what Pat's saying, is that we've got gridlock, in which case, I don't think this board's going to approve that kind of change.
Correct, I hear you.
You certainly do from generally the hours of around 7:00 to 8:00, and then again, followed by between 6:00, excuse me, 5:00 and probably 6:00, 6:30, 7:00 in that timeframe. And it's a very, very noticeable change. Now, there could be a legitimate argument that it's based on the time of year, and being that Christmas is next week, perhaps there's a huge influx in holiday deliveries. Maybe that's true. Again, I can't speak to that. I can only tell you that all these vans, you know, you see the vans. You don't see any cars anymore. It's just a line of vans. And again, obviously, they do come and go intimately during the day, but it's mostly during the rush hour. And again, be mindful that right aside of them, you have the hospital that occupies space there. And it's just as frustrating for them to be able to get in their own parking lot, because it's almost inaccessible, because it's just a solid line of cars, virtually parked. And again, they still can't adhere to, and again, this is off track, but they still can't adhere to the stop sign to get onto Commercial Way. But that's, again, has nothing to do with this site.
Well, it just seems to me that the more, the more parking spaces you ask for, the more difficult the whole situation is going to be. So, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it is zoned for that, but I believe that, you know, I believe that we also have concerns about the traffic as it affects that, so...
It's an allowable use, yes, I'll grant you that. However, inevitably, we have to look into the future. I'd like to be thankful, I'd like to be optimistic that the applicant inevitably is going to repurpose his mall. When that happens, where are these vans going to go?
That's a question for Amazon, I guess, at that point.
Again, this is why it should have been, in my mind, addressed on their own site, but that's a different discussion. Again, it has nothing to do with this. But when we look at the bigger picture, we have to forecast the future.
But on their site, there's not enough area to pack all these vans anyway.
Well, then, clearly, then they gave us incomplete information when they came in. That's really the reality.
Well, that's their fault for buying a place that didn't have it.
No, 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 they didn't buy it. They only rented. But again, they clearly gave incomplete, erroneous, potentially erroneous information.
Right.
Anyway.
And to be fair to them, who, yeah, I mean, who even knows how, back when they originally came, what they envisioned their business to be as compared to what it is today, too. So, I mean, that's, yeah, that's a different discussion. I mean, but what we have in front of us, I mean, you know, it seems like, you know, for us to sign the amended site plan would obviously be difficult at this point in time. I, you know, it would seem that it would behoove us to request the applicant to, an updated traffic study based on this usage and this, you know, and good luck trying to find... I mean, I think Amazon's going to have to weigh in, because I don't know where you go in order to get what the expected in-and-out is, you know, per hour. I mean, it's not, it's not, you can't go to ITE and get an Amazon facility site, I'm pretty sure. So it's going to be a little bit difficult.
That should be relatively available. They know their...
I'm sorry?
Well, I'm not sure.
That should be relatively available for their information. They know where they've got those people coming.
Well, I'm not sure, only because it's not Amazon. It's, again, it's a subcontractor, and whether they have control or not. But that's, that's between you and staff here as to how you work that out. But it certainly is a different, a different traffic patent than what presents itself going with our standard shopping center, in terms of the projected in-and-out values. With that, I'll entertain a motion unless there's any other questions.
We're going to make a motion to...
Make a motion to request the, I mean, if that's what the board wants, to make a motion to request that the applicant provide an updated traffic study based on, based on this usage. Because the only one that we have, obviously, is the old one with it being Quarry Square.
That's what the additional parking spaces they're looking for.
Those aren't additional parking spaces. That parking was approved when Quarry Square was originally approved. Faffett, in his wisdom, never built it all out, and it was never used. But it was, if you go back to the original Quarry Square, that's actually built, that was actually in that. And as he said, the drainage was considered as part of that. I know that. I actually worked the drainage off of that when I did this plan. So, you know, it's, it can definitely handle the site, and it was part of the original project. So he's really only building something that he'd already gotten approval for, is what he wants to do.
What was your, what did you make a motion that we have?
Have the applicant update.
Have the application, take the traffic, have the traffic study done to...
Okay. Motion by Babe to have the applicant prepare a traffic study for the updated usage at the Quarry Square Plaza. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Lena. All those in favor?
No.
Opposed? One opposed. Three in favor, one opposed.
Oppose to the traffic study?
Joe, I'm being fair. It's not relevant to me whether you do a traffic study. I see firsthand exactly what has been created because of this. And adding another 200, 100 and something spots is only going to make it worse. So I don't need a traffic study to tell me what I've already seen. And again, what I predicted was going to happen. Nothing has changed. So I'm not going to waste anyone's time by pretending that that's going to influence me. It's not. I was just being fair.
I think it's a step, anyway.
Again, I'm just being fair. I'm being transparent.
I know you, I am. Okay.
Eli, you're next.
For the record, Eli Leno from Mayor Antonellis, Jackowitz, and Heranis. I represent Master Collision Center Inc. They currently have a location in Upton, but are looking to move to Milford on the site, currently owned by Harry O'Neal Hineson on 288 West Street, Route 140. The zoning board requires a special permit for the change of use in the CC zone for automotive use. Again, this is a collision center, and they'd like to have a special permit to do that. In terms of your board's jurisdiction on this matter, there's no proposed changes to the shapes of the existing buildings. They're not sure what the use for the current two-story, former daycare area would be. So, right now, they have a purchase and sale agreement to buy this contingent on being able to permit this for their collision center use. As owners of that, they might continue trying to find someone to lease that other area or something, but no plans at this point. They also, at their current location, have, I think it's a maybe six-car, Class II license, because occasionally they repair something and need to be able to sell it. That's something that they'll also be applying for at this location. As shown on the plans, that would be in this area here is where they would intend to park 10 cars up to, not necessarily always have that filled. And with that, those spaces, the existing spaces used that way, they still have enough spots for the current uses, or the uses that they would be requesting. Any questions I can answer for you?
I'll read Larry's letter, just for the board. Applicant requests ZBA special permit to utilize the rear commercial building for an auto-related business on the subject property. Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw requires special permit for auto-related uses in the CC zone. Proposed use will include auto body collision repair business as well as used car sales. The front building on the property is for office use and is currently vacant. The proposed use appears to generally meet applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw, provided that a maximum number of unregistered vehicles does not exceed 10. Therefore, I recommend a favorable approval be forwarded to the Zoning Board of Appeals. An amended site plan will need to be approved by the Planning Board, should the special permit be issued. So if that is issued, they would have to come back to us, so that's clear. With that, I'll open up to members of the board for...
Did you have a question or two?
Yep, go ahead.
Eli, what I recall, a couple of years ago, a two-story garage office. What I, unless I could be, unless I'm mistaken, what I recall a couple of years ago was they came, I think it was, they looked for it, to allow the use of a car detailing. So is the car detailing there, or is that gone?
There's nobody in that spot right now. There was a special permit, I believe, granted in 2014 for that use. And we looked into if you could amend, if that could be amended. It can't, so...
What I'm trying to calculate in terms of, if what you're suggesting is both of those buildings are presently vacant, which is what I think you're saying?
Right.
Okay. So if that's the case, that's one thing. I just, when you come back and we try to factor in what you're going to need for parking and so on and so forth, we obviously have to look at the usage for the, what you guys, what is referred to as the daycare, but then I guess now it's referred to as a office. We need to calculate what the parking requirement would be for that in terms of what the parking requirement would be for your garage office and so on and so forth, when we start talking about...
We did take those under consideration as office and auto use to get the amount of spaces the Carrier and Hellman showed on this plan, but yes, you're absolutely correct.
All right. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. With that, I, now that there's nothing else in that building, then I don't see a problem with...
There's nothing in the daycare?
Nothing there, and nothing in the other one. I, what I recall was, like I said, the car detailing. So I guess my, if the car detailing is not there, then that's, that's...
That's why we need the special permit.
Yeah, that's why you need the special permit, which I'm fine with. Because, again, same usage, as far as I'm concerned.
Right, very similar, yes.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
So if they, if they were to occupy the, somebody was to occupy the daycare, they'd have to come back for a...
I would, well, it depends on how that plan comes forward to us as part of the special permit. If they all put it in as an office now, and they show the parking, then no, they wouldn't have to. If they change that usage, then they would have to come back to us. Or if they, if they say there is nothing and we're not going to provide parking, then they would have to come back. But that would be part of what they would have to do as part of the site plan.
And that, that building is just completely speculative from my client's perspective right now, because they want to be able to continue running there. They want to move from Upton to Milford for this.
I'll hear a motion.
Favorable to the ZBA.
Motion by Pat, send a favorable recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor sending a favorable recommendation to the Zoning Board will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
ZBA special permit referral for One Harding Street. You want to go on this one, Bob?
Does anyone have a plan?
It's number 106, right here.
Oh, a corner lot.
Yeah.
I always have sympathy for corner lots.
Yeah, well, he doesn't even meet side yard setback.
I'm just saying, I always have sympathy for corner lots.
I would, too, if he met side yard setback.
That's a proposal.
At the minimum, he should at least be able to meet the side yard.
No, no, no.
The collision ones?
Does it really matter? Does it really matter?
Lena in favor, and one was opposed to that street.
Only matters if you get a lot out of it.
That's true.
Okay. So, this person is looking to add a garage addition that will be encroaching upon the front yard setback in this location here. Currently, currently, he has a driveway. Well, actually, currently, the driveway is over here on this site coming out on the Taff. There is nothing, no, there is no garage presently. He's proposing a garage, and then he's going to come out onto Harding Street as opposed to going out onto Taff Street.
to going out on the Taff Street.
You only want to be eight feet from the...
Yeah, 8.2 feet from the, from this particular line here. It's...
That's a tough one.
And it doesn't even conform to the front yard setback right now?
Right, it's currently, it's non, it's pre-existing non-conforming.
I'll read in Larry's letter, "The applicant requests ZBA variance to construct a 20-by-24 attached garage on the subject property. This corner lot property has two front yard setbacks, two side yard setbacks, with no rear yard setback required. Specifically, the variance requests the front yard setback on Taff Street be reduced from 30 to 8.2. The house is currently only 28.1 from Taff Street, thus already encroaching into the front yard setback by 1.9. Larry's comment is a narrow, single-car garage would create less of an encroachment. Therefore, I recommend an unfavorable report be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals." The other thing, I mean, I looked at it, asked Larry, you know, I think a one-car might actually get him to meet the side yard, as it's shown. I mean, I, as Pat said, you know, we have sympathy to people that have frontage on two streets. You like to try to be somewhat amenable to them, and sometimes that is a hardship. However, this doesn't even, if we were, if we were to send a favorable, our recommendation would effectively be not even meeting the current side yard setback. So, we don't, you know...
It's going to be at least 15 feet. I mean, that's a problem. If it was 14.9, I'd overlook it, but I mean, you can't be eight feet, that just doesn't work for me. Again, I'm fine with reducing it from 30 to 15, because I believe he shouldn't be penalized, because if he was one door down, he wouldn't. But this one, I can't do.
I'm the same way.
Yeah.
I figure, I figure a corner lodge gets penalized, but at least meet the, at least meet the side yard setback you're supposed to have.
If he wants to make the garage 12 by 24, effectively making it a one-car, I'm fine with that, but I can't, you know, that would give you 15.2, or actually 16.2, which I'm fine with. But I can't do the...
Absolutely not.
And the other thing is aesthetically, it would stick out in that neighborhood. There is no doubt about it that you don't, when you're dropping that, that would be very, very noticeable, very obvious.
There's one in the neighborhood that...
Is there?
Yeah, what's-his-name's old house, Reno's, Bachi's old house, that fits, that it's non-conforming like that, and it sticks, and like you say, it sticks out like a sore thumb.
And that's, you can't, you know...
No, no.
I'm going to make a motion for unfavorable...
Motion by Pat, send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor sending an unfavorable with Larry's letter to the zoning board of appeals will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four.
The only I'd ask is, you could potentially add to your letter suggesting that if you brought it more into...
And if you did.
This letter did say...
He said if you made it small, yeah, it would have less of an encroachment. He didn't get into exact numbers, but he did indicate that.
ZBA variance referral, 300 East Main Street, Rockland Trust. I guess we have no one here for that. So, with that, I'll read Larry's letter in. "The applicant requests ZBA variance to install a second wall sign on the front of the building located on the subject property. Specifically, the variance requests the addition of a second wall sign to be installed on the front of the bank building. The second wall sign would be 27 square feet in area. The zoning bylaw allows for one wall sign on each side of a building per use, per lot. There is no hardship relating to this property regarding signage. A permit for 110 square foot wall sign has already been recently issued for the front wall of the bank building. Therefore, I recommend an unfavorable be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals."
Motion for unfavorable.
"Motion by Pat, send unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Is there a second?"
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor sending an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. This is a discussion on the retaining walls at Genialer's Crossing. There is some details in your packet as to the change in walls. Effectively, it's, we originally had approved as cast-in-place walls, and you'll see with Bob sending out their modular block walls, is what the, what the request is for.
Mike's email is his memo.
Can he do what we asked him to do?
I'll read Mike's email in. We have that in our package. Service memo regarding the change in the type of retaining wall. The change from port-in-place retaining wall is approved to an engineered concrete block retaining wall system is satisfactory, only if the planning board is in agreement. The planning board should obtain a definitive date for the completion of the retaining walls, regardless of what type of wall is going to be built. I've had several meetings and correspondence regarding the matter with no real action taking place to date. If the change in type of retaining wall is allowed, then the town should determine if the change is handled as a field change or a formal modification to the subdivision.
So, as you see, what we're seeking to do is to, you know, we have the, the crossings were constructed with boulders in place. I mean, they've been in place for quite a while, so the area's pretty stabilized. The plan called for port-in-place concrete walls. It would, it was going to be difficult because of the wetlands, because all these, most of these locations where people are putting in now are wetland crossings, and it's difficult to get in there now and modify the wetlands while the road is already, everything has been constructed. When it was natural, it was easy to do with footings and wing walls. So, they've gone through, and they've got engineered plans for segmented block retaining walls. These are similar to what we have behind Lowe's, also at Blair House. So, they're a good product, it's been engineered, and it's going to, it's going to actually, it's cost them more, but allow them to do it in a more timely fashion and get it done quicker.
Bob, I think to that point, I think, also, looking at the area, I think aesthetically, these are probably a little more appropriate for the area.
I agree.
Especially now at the midpoint, the majority has been built up, so I don't think you're wrong, just on a visual standpoint, that, and they have some pictures here, that I think that this is appropriate.
I just finished, I just finished designing one for Porter Square, choosing a similar product. I don't have an issue with that.
I have no qualms about the product at all. I think to Mike's point, though, I think the timeline needs to be established, a very realistic and honest timeline, I think is really what the question...
Needs a counter.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing is, they really can't start this work until...
Not going to be till spring. I don't know if it's spring because of the...
Well, they may have wetland issues we're trying to dig in, but it can't be laid on frozen ground, so...
Right, right. Well, they've still got a little bit of time to prepare the base. The ground's not quite frozen yet, so if they did, they could get some of them done. But here again, if you, you know, if you give the okay to use this particular product, then the applicant will, can work with Mike in determining, you know, that type of timeframe.
I don't think, I can't imagine you getting it in this year, because even if you were to get the go-ahead today and put an order in, my understanding with most of this stuff is, it's a minimum three to four weeks out, if you're lucky to get them in that quickly. So, you're into January, and I can't, but that's something you can work out with Mike.
Yeah, I don't know if Shea has them sitting on the ground.
Yeah, I sort of doubt it, not that they're engineered to the size.
Yeah, I don't think they got to have them sitting on the ground. I don't think they're going to be in a huge rush to get them done right now.
I don't, well, I mean, my own opinion is, I don't have a problem with doing this as a field change, I don't know if those members of the board do. I mean, at the end of the day, I think that is close enough, if they resemble the location that we were supposed to put in the cast-in-place wall, I don't have an issue with it being a field change.
But other questions, comments from the board?
Well, the wall's not that bad. Again, we make the developers put in straight granite ribbon because it lasts forever. And as far as I'm concerned, a cast-in-place wall lasts forever compared to even these. But I will go along with it.
Lena, any comments, questions?
Well, you know, I see, I heard Bob say, similar to what up by Lowe's.
Yep, behind Lowe's and then Blair House. You can see Blair House.
And I, you know, I go up by there often, and I, and it's still standing, so...
Oh, yeah. It's pretty...
I hope so.
It's 30-plus feet tall, so...
Yeah, I know.
Trucks go up there, turn around, and you know...
I only come down because I want, I can see a bulge run on the way down. I can't see a bulge if I'm driving up.
I guess the only other comment I have is, again, is what's the time, what is the anticipated time schedule to be complete?
Question I was going to have.
As soon as we get, we will work with, we are ready to order that right now, okay? As soon as you give an approval, as soon as they start supplying, and if the time is right, we'll work with my team. Like you said, we don't want to put it on the frozen ground.
Can't speak for Shea, we got to see what they have already, you know.
As soon as possible, we'll do that.
I mean, do you anticipate being done by August of 19...
No, much earlier than that.
Well, you tell me, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I don't want to put a timeline that's unrealistic, so you kind of...
Well, can you come, I mean, effectively, I think, you know, based on the discussion, I think what you're hearing is, we're acceptable to this, we're acceptable to this being a field change. Can you come back to us by the January 15th meeting and tell us what your anticipated schedule is? That way, you know you can go ahead, you can get an idea from Shea when the products will be ready, and then come back with us with the schedule at that meeting?
Yeah, because none of us have a problem with it.
Or send Larry, or send Larry...
Well, you'll have it with Mike, as long as you've worked it out with Mike, so he can send us an email saying, here's what we think the schedule's going to be.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Tell Larry about it, and he can...
Yes, that's fine.
Yes, so we know we can put the order in for the product, and we get an idea when the product will be available.
I think we all agree, we just want it done.
It's natural ground, I don't think they'd be frozen ground, and if they come in with the stone, I think they could possibly do it, unless we get tremendous snowstorms.
Well, they can work that, yeah, they can work it out when they have the thing. I mean, I know, I know in most of the cases, these guys will tell you not to do it on frozen, so if it is frozen, they're not going to...
Definitely, but where they have to excavate, put the stone down and everything, I think they...
Well, they also removing, they're removing.
They're removing the old, yeah.
Because when you excavate it, you take some of the frost out and put the stone there and drill down there. You might even do that if it's okay with Larry, you know?
It's going to be okay with Mike.
You'll be working with Mike anyway, so Mike will be reporting back to Larry and...
I would be cautious that, you know, it's all well and good that we're saying we're taking the frost out, but if it's very, very cold, it's going to be awful tough to be able to be laying down and not have frost already going in and stuff. So, I would caution the ability to do that.
I agree, yeah.
It all depends on the weather, because right now, we're talking about, it's 60 degrees already.
Yeah, if you can come back, if you can, by our meeting on the 15th, if you can tell us the schedule, we would appreciate that, and we're okay with doing this as a field change.
Either giving it to Larry or...
However, yeah, as long as we have the information on the 15th.
We don't need to come back.
You don't need to come back, I think we're just looking for a realistic, updated schedule, that's all. But please, what Mike's requesting.
Sure.
We didn't vote on this yet, did we?
No, it's just a discussion.
It's a field change now, so we don't have to, we don't have to vote on it, it's just